City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1393. Today is April 4th. Let us start by standing and saying the Pledges of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting with Item Number 1, let the Clerk call the roll.
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark. Harrison.
Here.
Holt. Moore. Sylvester.
Here.
All right, let it show that all council members are present. Moving on to the next item, which is the minutes. Has every council member received the minutes? Are there any corrections or adjustments to be made? Okay, here are none. Moving on to Item Number 3, which is Presentations. And it looks like we have a lot of Oaths of Office today, so we have a lot of family members in the audience. You're gonna have to bear with me, because this is gonna be a lot, but this is a good thing. We got a lot of people dedicating their lives to work for the City of Forest Park, and we appreciate you all, so we're going to start with the firefighters. So, is the Fire Chief here? Chief Jones? Chief Jones? All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get the Oath of Office started. These are all the individuals?
Yes, that is.
Okay. All right. Let me come down there.
Is everyone?
Yes.
If you want to say any quick bio. Okay. All right, so bear with me, because I know a lot of you have family here, and I want everybody to... Let me at least take this off. Sorry, I'm vaccinated. I'm not boosted, but I am fully vaccinated. I want everyone, your family, to hear your name clearly. So, when I start the oath, I'll say "Aye," you all say "Aye," and then individually, if we can go from left to right, one at a time, people state their names, so your family can hear you clearly, they can get you on video. And then, you have two options. You can swear, or you can affirm. So, I will say "Aye," and then I'll tell you to state your name. We go down, everyone states their name, and I say, "Do solemnly swear or affirm," and you can all individually say, "I swear," or "I affirm," and then you'll repeat after me from there. Is that clear? All right, thank you, everybody. All right, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. Say "Aye."
Aye.
And then, start with you.
John Eastnesswa.
Sherman Smith.
Austin Flannery.
David.
Edgar.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
You're fine. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties as.
Impartially discharge the duties as.
Firefighter slash paramedic.
Firefighter slash paramedic.
And you are all sworn in now, so thank you. We can clap it up. Once again, let me just introduce myself. I am the Mayor of City of Forest Park, Aaron Brown, and I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. We really love when residents come. I want to thank you for allowing your family member to partake this journey and work for our beautiful city. We appreciate their time, their commitment, their dedication, and their sacrifice. We appreciate you as well, because we know how hard it is to be family members of public workers, but the work is important, and we cannot state that enough. We thank you so much. Does anybody want to say anything? I don't be shy now. Okay, okay, so if you want... I think that would be a better photo, instead of being in a corner. We can just move in front.
Still one of the top.
Hold that.
There's plenty of room for y'all.
All right, you want to say?
I'll say something a little bit.
Want to say anything first, sir?
No, I'll let them go ahead, and then I'll say something afterwards.
Mr. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to say, or?
Oh, I just said it. On a tight schedule.
I want to thank everyone for coming out as well. I'm Jermaine Hill, I'm the Assistant Fire Chief. And when we were looking to hire new employees, we were looking for relentless givers, we were looking for critical thinkers, we were looking for future leaders, we were looking for lifelong learners, and definitely community advocates. And I believe that, in these gentlemen, we have that. So, guys, I challenge you to continue your pursuit of knowledge, always look out for the community, always look out for the community, always look out for your brothers and sisters. And I just want to thank you for choosing us, because there's a lot of other fire departments that you could have went to, but you chose Forest Park. So, I want to thank you. And, if I may, I'll start off with a pic. John East. John East is gonna have his daughter do it, but his daughter's ill, so I'm the B-take. Try my best not to stick.
If anybody wants to take a picture, drop.
Sure.
Well, I saw him wits. Oh, and Sherman, who's this young lady that's a pin? Next up for firefighter, Austin Flannery. Who do you have, sir?
My wife.
What was it?
Olivia.
Okay, come right. All right, next up, Mr. John Fredt, who do you have?
I have my sister.
All right. Mr. Taylor Demon, who do you have?
My wife, Kelly.
All right. All right, last but not least, we have Mr. David Gray. Who do you have, sir?
My wife, Kelly.
All right.
You guys, that's over.
I'm gonna say thank you to all for coming this evening. I want to thank the council mayor, council, city manager, distinguished guests, and family members for coming this evening. As I look at these six here, as I look at myself, as I'm coming towards my retirement age and moving forward, I see the next future leaders of Forest Park here, the next six here. So, that's something that's wonderful to say or hear, but I do see that with you guys coming about. So, before I move any further, I want to also say that I want to give thanks to our heavenly Father for allowing this to happen, because without Him, none of this would have been possible. I want to give thanks to Don Jones, or City Manager, and definitely council for allowing us to move forward with that. And like I said, as I'm moving forward and preparing for retirement, I just want to pass on a few things to you guys. I mean, being a resident up here since 1975, probably none of y'all were born since then. There's one other person that's around here. Oh, there he is, I won't say his name. He's been here a lot longer than me, but I guess he's been here since '75, so I'll let you figure out how long he's been here. But to be here, know the community, and know the people, I know a lot of family members here, and as I move forward, I want you to continue that service to those people that I truly do love and do know. So, these things I want to pass on. I want you to be humble. When I say be humble, it takes the spotlight off of you and puts the spotlight on others. So, let's remember doing that. Be creative. We don't want anyone to sit around coming to the firehouse not to do anything. We want you to be creative and be out of the box and do something out of the norm. You guys should know about Forest Park. We do that already, so let's continue that in the future. Have gratitude. Be thankful for what you have, because you can lose that the next day. So, be very grateful to citizens that we treat and care for, that they're giving you an opportunity to do the things that you do at home. And also have compassion, helping others in their time of need. It doesn't mean when the tones drop. It means if you're at Kroger's, or you're driving down the street, and you see somebody that needs help, give them assistance. This is our community. Show them that love, definitely show them that love. And last is giving. When you receive so much, when you... Let's say, when you're giving, if you start giving more to others, you'll probably get that seven times back. You'll definitely get more as you give. So, make sure that you take care of all these words I've given to you, passing on, and then if you have any questions, there's always Chief Hill. He'll still be here for a while. But as I move forward, I feel blessed, and I feel special. I'm pleased to see that the six that you're moving on, that Forest Park is in great hands. Thank you.
All right, last call. Does anyone want to say anything? Any words whatsoever? All right, does any council members want to say anything? Anyone address that? Dr. Moore?
Congratulations, and welcome to the City of Forest Park. Welcome to our family, and we're excited to have you service our community, and so thank you very much for choosing Forest Park.
Yes, I just did what Dr. Moore said. Thank you, gentlemen. God bless you. See if I can make sure I get a party to come out and meet you and get to know you.
Thank you so much in echoing my fellow council members, but, you know, also, times are changing. There's a lot that's happening. You've got a lot more... You know, you have a myriad of situations and illnesses that you're dealing with right now. Continue to stay focused. You've got some of the best leadership this side of Mississippi, so continue to follow in their footsteps, and they'll train you really, really well. And continue to love these people here, and we'll love you back as we will. God bless, and we're praying for you every day.
Councilwoman Adams, I want to tell you that when I was a little girl, it was always the firefighters. It was always the fire truck, like, they were our heroes. So, I grew up in Avondale, and so we saw the fire trucks quite often in Avondale, but nonetheless, when we would see the red truck, or sometimes they would open up the fire hydrants for us, or they would let us get up on the truck, or do the smokehouse, or those were some of my better and best childhood memories. There's something very special about firefighters. You hold a very special place in the hearts of the community. You guys are seen as the good guys. You guys are the ones that save everyone from the fire. Little boys want to grow up to be you. They wear the little fire hat, so I'm just excited that we have the six of you, and I'm just excited too that the children that are here tonight, and then the children in the community are gonna get those same experiences that I got when I was a child. Thank you so very much.
I just want to say congratulations to you. It's seven of us back here. I just want to say congratulations to all of you, and welcome to the City of Forest Park, and I'm very, very happy that you chose us. So, be safe out there and take care of yourself. Also, I mean, you know, while you're trying to take care of the residents, you have to remember you have to take care of yourself too. So, again, congratulations, and welcome to Forest Park.
I'd like to say congratulations. I always say to those of us who serve in uniform, it's an honor and a privilege to do so, and I commend you. Do great things. We have your back 110%, and one day, one day, I know down at UC, they do a stair run that commemorates the events of 9/11. We hope to see Forest Park representing there, so I hope to see you there, but thank you.
I'll say a little bit here as well, so welcome, folks. We hope you have a long, great career here, and I want to echo what Chief Jones and Chief Hill said earlier, that thanks City Council here for basically setting the course to expand our full-time firefighters and to bring on U6 plus some more. So, it's a great achievement for us, and we look forward to adding more firefighters in the future, and we think you guys are the cream of the crop, and we thank you for choosing us, but we choose you as well, and I think you're gonna have a great time here in Forest Park serving this community. And the leadership of Chief Hill, it's a shame that he's going, but he's got a lot of fine words, but we are in good hands coming up, so congratulations, and we look forward to a long, successful career for each one of you.
All right, so we're gonna be moving on to our next round of swearing ins, so if everybody want to come on down. Yeah. All right, we're gonna be hearing from our Police Chief, Chief Orange.
Hi, good evening. Isn't it great to have firemen and policemen together in one room?
Yes.
I'm gonna give everybody a second to clear out.
Enjoy the mini Forest Park restaurants, they're all.
I think we have some police family out in the hall waiting to get in. So, we have three police officers that we want to have sworn in tonight. Unlike the Fire Department, these are not additional officers to the force. These are replacement officers that we've hired. The first officer that I want to call up is Brianna Burleson. If you would just come stand right up and... On the podium there. Brianna grew up in Highland County, Ohio, and she began her law enforcement career with the Warren County, Ohio Sheriff's Office as a corrections officer. She was hired by Forest Park in July of 2021, and was sent to the State Highway Patrol Academy for basic training in Columbus, Ohio. She graduated this past January, and if you do your math, that's a long time to be in basic training, and is currently in her final phase of field training. So, she is still with a coach and a cruiser working together, so she's not even on her own yet. With her tonight is her mother Rebecca, who is a deputy with the Butler County Sheriff's Office, her father Jeff, a retired lieutenant with the Beaver Creek, Ohio Fire Department, and her sister Alyssa. Her boyfriend, Thomas Casimir, a trooper with the Ohio State Highway Patrol, will be pinning on her badge momentarily. Our second officer is Katie Rutherford. Katie grew up in Butler County, Ohio, and attended the Butler Tech Police Academy. She graduated from basic police training in 2019. After graduation, she began her law enforcement career with the Elmwood Police Department, and later with the St. Bernard Police Department. She began her career with our department in March of this year, and is currently in our field training program. With her tonight is her parents Kathy and Glenn, and I believe grandparents Ernest and Betty, and Sister Kayla. Her badge will be pinned by her father Glenn. And then, John Hubbard. John was born and raised in Hamilton County, and began his career with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office in 2003 as a corrections officer. He later attended the police academy and was assigned to Road Patrol. During his career with the Sheriff's Office, he worked in several districts throughout our county. Even though John brings with him 19 years of law enforcement, he will first undergo our field training with our officers to learn how Forest Park does law enforcement. With John tonight is his wife of 11 years, Christina, daughters Maya, Hannah, and Juliana, son John, and his father Gary. Unfortunately, his mother's in Florida and couldn't be here tonight. His badge will be pinned by his wife.
All right, at this moment, we are going to do the Oath of Office, so if you could just turn slightly and face me, and then starting with Officer Hubbard, going back, I want everyone to say their names individually, that way your family can hear it, because a lot of times, people say it all at once, and I just want your family's videos to be as clear as possible. This is being broadcast also, and it will be posted on our public access channel. So, raise your right hand and repeat after me. So, "Aye," and then state your name, starting with John.
John Hubbard.
Caitlin Exford.
Brianna Burleson.
All right, do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully. Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties as police officer.
Discharge the duties as police officer.
Congratulations, you are now sworn in officers. I just want to take the time... Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, did you want to say anything?
No, I was just gonna have the people there go pin their badges on.
Oh, yeah, if we can do the pinning, if people want to move up, and then we can do, you know, photos. Just really quickly, I want to say thank you for, on two fronts, not only for taking your time and your effort to join, to serve our residents in the City of Forest Park, but making this police force the finest in all of Ohio, that far. This is the finest police force in all of Ohio. I say it here, I will say it continuously, not only because of this leadership, but because the leadership is intentional about getting good officers who care, officers that respect individuals, who respect humanity, who show empathy and compassion, and get out into the community, and do good work. So, I just want to say thank you. I want to thank your families, all of you. I know how difficult this can be at times, but if you need anything from me, if you need anything from the Chief, feel free to reach out, do not hesitate, because we know how tough of a job this could be. We absolutely know what's out there. But as always, I will say, I drive a blue Chevrolet Cruze, and if you see it going a little bit over the speed limit, you know, just remember, I control the city budget. But thank you. Does any council member want to say anything?
I definitely would like to.
Councilwoman.
Please. So, I believe, I'm a firm believer, Officer Hubbard, that if you really want to know who someone truly is, you see their children. So, earlier, I met your son. He's a very warm little boy, which means he must have a very warm father. Thank you, sir. The other thing is, I found something, and I'm not gonna be long, but in many communities, police and law enforcement officers don't always serve to protect or keep law and order. Instead, the law enforcement also have to take the role of social workers, community organizers, counselors, protectors, mediators, and even medical care providers. So, the role that you're taking, not only to protect and serve, but also to be a voice for the people, and I thank you so much for that, because this is not an easy task. So, we appreciate you.
I have to disagree with the mayor. He said that we were, Forest Park had the best police department in Ohio. No, we have the best police department in the country. I want to say congratulations and welcome to Forest Park. And my car is red.
I ain't lived anywhere else, I just needed to know.
We truly do have the best department, and it wasn't... It's very intentional, it didn't happen overnight, but it takes every single day being committed to not only your work, but the people of the city to make that happen. Families, we really, really appreciate you. We support you. We are here, Kleenexer otherwise, and yes, you're absolutely right, little John and my own down, they're just sweet and lovely, so thank you for sharing them with us. We are keeping them safe in our prayers, and we've got their back just as much as they got ours, and thank you so much.
I'd like to just thank each of you for taking on the charge and challenge to render service and support to the City of Forest Park, and I pray God's protection for you and for its blessings, and thank your family for their support, and we look forward to good things here in the City of Forest Park, so thank you.
I'd just like to say, once again, thank you and congratulations for picking Forest Park. I used to like to joke with any police officer that I know that I tried to be a police officer, but it was that pesky lie detector test that got me, so it's here I am now, right? But I digress, but really, thank you once again for your service. I don't mean that lightly, because I've served in uniform in different capacity, but it's a sacrifice, not only to yourselves, but to your families, and we thank the families as well, so welcome to Forest Park.
Just to piggyback off of my other councilwomen and councilmen, welcome to the City of Forest Park, and we're so excited to have you as part of our family, so welcome.
Thank you.
I guess I get to go last. Again, thank you all for choosing Forest Park, and I welcome you on to our family here. you on to our family here. And I, just won't repeat what they all said, but I will say it's absolutely true that we are a family, and we do appreciate all the service that you folks are going to provide us over the next several years. We pride ourselves on being a very safe community, and it starts because of the commitment at the top from Chief Arns and his commitment from his entire department. We recently just finished our Kalia certification, recertification, so that commitment to excellence is from the top down, but we get it all the way down, and we expect nothing more or nothing less from any of our other employees, and we welcome you here, we think you're going to have a great career, and we hope it's a nice, long career here, and we wish you all the safety, and we know how hard it is with the families, particularly in your profession. So, you know, any support that we give from the, from city council and from city leadership is, if you need us, we're here for you. So thank you for coming to work for us. Thank you.
Chief, you want to say something? I'm not going to take up too much time, I know this is going to be a long council meeting, but I do want to thank our city council for all your support, each and every day. We feel it, and we appreciate it. Also want to thank city manager Don Jones. He's forward-thinking, and when we have some vacancies in the department, he's looking ahead to front-fill, whereas historically, we have always been trying to play catch-up. And I'm happy to say that with the front-filling, we're able to kind of stay ahead of the game, so I appreciate that. So there's no further comments, or?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. I was just gonna have our new officers step out in the hall with their family. Right out in the hallway is a great place to take photographs, and then I invite everybody to come over to the police department for a tour with your officer.
Yeah, I'll take this now.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
See you later. Just two places to sign.
Okay, oh, just two places? Okay, let me, right here?
Yes, sir.
All right. You got that. Okay. Oh yeah, because I signed that one before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, yeah, gotcha. Oh, those are always fun. All right, and that concludes our item number three on the agenda presentations. Moving on to item number four, this is communications from the public. So at this time, this is time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. I think we also have a presentation from resident and councilmember. You can go, yeah, Chelsea Clark, you can go up now.
Do I have to tell my address?
Yeah. Sign, do the sign-in sheet.
I'll sign it. Good evening and thank you, Mayor Brown. I am happy to be here tonight representing the Minority Community Business Initiative. This independent group of business and community leaders came together a few years ago to promote minority women and veteran-owned businesses in Forest Park and the surrounding communities. One way we do this is through the recognition of select companies throughout the year. For example, our group highlights women-owned businesses in the spring and Hispanic businesses in the fall. Tonight, we are happy to acknowledge this group's, the group's Black Business Spotlight Award winner for the honor of Black History Month. Several companies were nominated for this honor, and an online vote determined the winner. After counting the votes, we are happy to report that iRepairPlus is this year's Black Business Spotlight winner. Owned and operated by local entrepreneur Malachi Terry, iRepairPlus is the one-stop-shop for laptop, cellphone, or computer repair. And to my knowledge, at least, you know, in these surrounding areas or in the tri-county area, they're the only black business, full-service electronics company. The company specializes in fixing broken or cracked screens, malfunctioning charge ports, or even underperforming batteries. Malachi and his team can help you with issues related to computer viruses, hard drive problems, and other common challenges. iRepairPlus also activates phone services for Verizon, T-Mobile, and Ultra customers. In honor of this successful minority-owned business, it is my honor on behalf of the Minority Community Business Initiative to recognize Malachi Terry and iRepairPlus with tonight's award, if you'd like to come up and get your award.
Nice to see everybody, and as y'all know, my name is Malachi Terry. I'm owner of iRepairPlus. Actually, I've been in business for over 10 years, though. I'm new to Forest Park area for the past three, actually, the store's been here for three years. Always in the corner, just fixing people's stuff. So I've met a lot of people in Forest Park, just, you know, about fixing people's things and serving the community in that fashion. And, you know, actually, it's very nice to get one of these, because, you know, like I just said, I've been in business over 10 years, and this is actually the first time I ever got an award from the community.
I've been in Mount Healthy, that's where my first business started, back in like 2009, 2010. And Fintytown, I've had stores in Sharonville, and I had a store in tri-county. And none of them actually, you know, so I think this is very nice, and I really like this, and I'm gonna cherish this, you know. So yeah, I think that's very cool. And also, just to be here to witness the swearing-in of the officers and the fire department, and just being invited into the, being a part of the community, I think is very nice, and I thank you so much, Ms. Chelsea, for letting me be a part of all this, so it's very nice, you know.
Can you repeat your business address again? Because this is being recorded.
It is 2260 Waycross Road. I'm over there by the sheriff's station on Hamilton Avenue, on that side of Forest Park, right in the Ollies Plaza, next to the new car wash. So just right off of 275 and Hamilton Avenue. We open seven days a week, so I invite anybody here, if you have any phone, computer, or tablet issues. The team is very skillful and knowledgeable, and we also activate, as she said, phone service, so I partner with Verizon and T-Mobile, and so it's a very nice place to come down and do some business with. I invite all of you to come on down and check us out. All right, thanks, y'all.
Do we have any more communication from the public? If anybody want to come up, just come up to the podium. Please, keep your comments to, limited to five minutes. But when you get to the podium, there's a sign-in sheet over there, just sign your name and your address.
My name is Loveya Stevenson. I live at 11318 Kinshire Drive. I have been in touch with the city manager, Don Jones, by email, and I have also talked with Terrence Harrison, who lives across the street from me, about an issue that we have been having with the house next door for about three years now. And I just contacted Mr. Jones in December regarding it, because it's getting worse and worse, and it's having an adverse effect on my property. And I know that different things that you do in order to upgrade your house, you have to have a permit for it, which I feel that what is happening with this property, the issue that it's causing for me, that it's not fair that I have to pay for a permit in order to alleviate what this property is doing, what is happening. And so they have a tree, they have a large maple tree that sits in the front of their house, that the tree is dead. I've had two avarice tell me that the tree was dead, and it's dropping branches onto my property, it's dropped branches onto my car, and I was the one that had to remove the branches. And I've contacted the rental company, they don't care about the property. I've contacted them because they have rerouted their gutter downspout about 15 feet from where the gutter downspout is, they put an extension that runs down to my property. So it's flooding my property on the side. When I walk around there, I had to go buy boots so that I could walk to the back of my property to the fence. It stays wet, and I'm trying to figure out, how am I going to be able to utilize the side of my property? Do I have to pay somebody to put in pavers? You know, am I gonna have to get a permit in order to put in pavers? I'm gonna have to get a permit to put in a cement walkway so that I can walk back there without having to step in? The mud is like a swamp. And even now, you know, it hasn't rained in a couple of days, it rained a little bit today, but still, the ground is very soft. I have to walk close to the house. There's a crack in my garage that's going widthways. I don't know if it's from the water, you can see where the water has come up on the side of my house, on the foundation. I don't know if it's just from that, or if they have a tree in between the houses, and I'm sure that that tree is taller than the house next door, which is a two-story. My house is a one-story. And I'm sure that the roots from that tree is going under their house and my house. The tree in the front has dropped branches since it dropped it on my car. And, you know, anybody can drive down Kinshire Drive, and if you drive down Kinshire, you will see the branches, I mean, large branches that have fallen off of this tree. The tree needs to be cut down before it hurts somebody. Branches are hanging over the sidewall, which I believe that it makes the city responsible. If a branch comes off that tree, I don't know if it falls and it hurts somebody, that that tree needs to come down, because it's a danger. It's a danger to the community, it's a danger to the people that live in the house. I don't hold the people in the house responsible, they are renters. They do not own the property. But I do hold the property owners responsible for not taking care of that property. And just a month ago, they reattached the gutter downspout in the back of the house, which was allowing water to run down. My house is downhill from theirs, so all that water runs down to my property. My backyard flooded to where all that water ran up on the back of my, on the foundation in the back. I had to have a sump pump put in. You know, that cost me thousands of dollars to put a sump pump in, because all that water was running into my basement. And not only from that, but from where the, from the, I don't know if it's the city property or if it's a school property that's behind my property. When they redid the school back there, they raised that up, and now, instead of it being more level, it's a hill. So all the water that comes off of that, it runs right down onto my property. And so when we have a heavy rain, my backyard gets flooded. So what am I supposed to do about that? You know, I was not notified about what the school was going to be doing. So because they raised that up, you know, I have pictures where you can see where it was raised up, from where it was from before they started to where it is now, since they have ended. So that means that what they have done is causing me issues. And because it's causing me issues, that means I'm gonna have to pay more money in order to get something done. So I'm wondering, what am I supposed to do, you know, in order to alleviate the water that can cause issues to my foundation? You know, all that water running up against my foundation, you know, that's causing me issues. And because I'm a senior citizen, so that means I'm on a fixed income. And if I have to keep paying to get a permit in order to do things, in order to alleviate this, you know, can I put in a French drain? You know, what is it that I can do in order to keep this side of my house from being drenched with water? You know, I can't get any help from, from the people that live there. All they say is, it's not their house. This is not our house, we rent, you gotta contact maintenance. Well, I contacted maintenance, they don't respond to me because I don't live there. But I thank Mr. Jones for forwarding the email on that I sent to him, and Mr. Miller did say that he cited this company to court. But I'm here today, he just let me know that on Monday that he cited them to court. But I'm here today with pictures to make sure that this council knows what is happening with these two properties. And it's not just the property next to me, the property next to them. Their backyard looks like hoarders live there, and I am not kidding you, when you look at the pictures. You can actually go to, you can actually go to the county website, the county auditor, go to the county auditor website, put in 11236, 11326, and pull up the aerial view of it. And when you pull up the aerial view of it and look, you'll see all the junk in that backyard. And what it does is that it harbors rodents, it harbors cats. I spent all winter fighting cats that were coming into my front yard, you know, using my front yard like a litter box. So, oh yeah, I have, I have the pictures of what I'm talking about. These are the pictures of that tree. And these are the pictures of the changes in what happened with the school from how it was. That's the picture of how it was. You can see that it's not, the rise is not that high. But when you look at the second picture, you can see that the image of the, that is higher now. And so that means that all that water that comes off, and that right there is just a little pipe that they have back there, that is not going to catch all the water that runs off of that property. So, and this is a picture of the extension that they have, here's the gutter, and that's the extension. So it's running at least 15 feet from where the gutter is. And that runs down onto my property. And so that makes it, you know, that makes it difficult for me, because it's damaging, it's causing damage to my foundation, which means that if something is not done, that this has been going on for three years. So if something is not done, that means that I'm out of money to try to fix it, you know, if something is not done. So I'm here today to try to get some assistance from the city to make these people take care of their property. That's all they have to do. They're, they are a conglomerate. I'm one person. They own many properties throughout the country. So it's not like that they don't have the money to do it, they're just not doing it. And I pay twice the property taxes of the house next door to me. So if I'm paying twice the property taxes as them, then something needs to be done in order to help me, you know, to help me to be able to take care, a better care of my property. So that's, you know, that's all I have. I thank you for, for your time, for listening.
I can, other than, obviously, we're gonna respond, but some of the things you talked about stormwater, we have a program, and I'll have our guys go out there, and we'll look at your yard and engineer it, and tell you exactly what you need to do.
Okay.
And tell them exactly what they need to do, and if there's water that is diverting, that they've intentionally diverted onto your property, we'll take a look at that as well.
Okay.
Naturally flowing water would just hit the ground, it flows the way of the contours of the ground, there's not really anything you can do about that.
Right.
But if they're specifically directing it toward your property, which apparently they are.
Right.
We'll have our guys look at that, I'll have them out there tomorrow, the next day, hopefully. And we've got an engineer on staff, and they will, French drains, whatever it is, we also have a program through that, through that department, they'll help pay for that as well.
Okay, all right.
So I'll, I'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
And we'll get our guys out there, and we'll get after them again, and keep citing them.
Okay.
Maybe we can get, you know, get, but you're right, it's a huge conglomerate, it's basically a huge multi-billion dollar hedge fund that owns houses all over the country. Particularly the local area as well, I think they own over two hundred houses here, this general area. And, and we've got some issues with them in general. But you're right, it's off, it goes back to taking these houses, corporately owning them, taking them off the market so that individual homeowners can't buy them because they scooped them up from the banks or whomever they bought them from. And turned them into rental homes. And, and managed them like you would a corporation rather than a neighborhood business. And, and we're not the only city that is falling with this problem right now. And, and it's countywide, if not statewide. I know because where it came from before, there were three thousand houses there that they owned.
Nationwide.
It's nationwide with this particular company. But in any event, there is some things we can help you with on the stormwater.
Okay.
And we'll continue to cite them. We'll look at the, we do have a program where we remove trees as well.
Okay.
And, but quite frankly, if I can get the owner that, to pay to remove that tree rather than the city paying for it, to take responsibility as a good citizen, like they should, and care about their neighbors, which they don't. At least in this case, they apparently don't, because their tree keeps falling on your stuff.
Right.
And that's just not right, so we'll actively pursue this.
Okay.
But we'll start with the stormwater issue, because I think that's probably the biggest issue right now.
Yeah, the flooding, yeah.
And then we'll work our way to the rest of it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being a good citizen.
Mr. Jones, she also discussed the house with all the tires. So I did have a resident contact me with some concerns, she's been a longtime resident. And her property too is affected by this particular property. So I did, I went by this weekend and took some pictures. And so is there any way we can address this particular home with all the tires and things in the front yard? And that's a nice street, and I would be upset as a resident regarding that. So like I said, other residents are complaining as well.
Okay. Yes, there is.
And just out of curiosity, so when we have these large conglomerates and whatnot, how does the city, how does the city essentially take them on to see if they're able to recoup the damages? The economic damages that are being affected, that affects the neighbors? And/or is there a suit, a civil suit of sort that can be filed in conjunction or just, or, I'm just not sure, I don't know.
We do, again, that's a legal question, but we'll cite them to court based on our violation of our current laws. And we'll continue to cite them. And, and that's the biggest way we can compel compliance, is through citing them and making them pay fines and fees. Ultimately, I think we can escalate it, and John may want to talk about it, we can escalate it and take action to clean it up ourselves and then assess the property owner for the cleanup.
Yeah, I think, I think we should add something like that as a work session item to go over many options as far as it pertains to our fines. And then zoning code, a number of different departments, but I should add that to the agenda.
We are actively citing these folks. And quite frankly, the citations aren't enough to compel.
And we do have pro champs that are supposed to keep a registry of all out of town investors, correct?
Yes, they actually have to register their homes, but we also are beginning, we bought the software and we're implementing a, you'll see council will have it, a rental registration program, which will also keep track of these and also, you know, some of the monies that would be paid for. The registration fees would go toward a, an individual to basically monitor all the rental single-family housing in the city and make sure that it's up to code and not in violation of any of our property maintenance.
Okay, so I've added that as a work session item and, oh, well, thank you for bringing this to our attention, because this is the first that I'm hearing of it, but this is incredibly concerning, especially if you've had to deal with this for so long, so I apologize for that. But then also, since you've had to expend money of your own by no fault of your own. And I just can't imagine how patient, patient you must be. Because it would be a different conversation that I would be, I'd be having, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. Also, so do we have any other communications from the public? Mr. Weirs, do you want to go ahead and? Oh, yeah, you want to go too, okay. Yeah, yeah, we, we got time.
Go ahead, Mr. Weir, please.
Yeah, we're here for you.
I have a, I have permission from council to present a moment for history each month authorized by a former mayor. And blessed by other mayors, including myself, to do this on a repeated basis. So what it amounts to though, before I start, my name is Brandon Weirs. I live at 11261 Hanover Road. And I have a position in an organization called the Forest Park Historical Society. And so I tend to look backwards. And in so doing, I want to mention that history was made here tonight by having two African-American firefighter paramedics sworn in. There was a time we had none. No African-Americans in the fire department. And tonight we had two, but by the same token, there was a time when we had no women in the police department. Tonight we had two women sworn in. And so history was made in the direction, not only of justice, but in the direction of playing with a full deck. If you don't have African-Americans either in the fire department or the police department, you're not playing with a full deck, and by the same token, that is now something that we didn't have when we started. Now, all these years ago, in the fifties and sixties, this is a new achievement and I recommend, and I recognize that it's onward and upward. And the council and the chiefs of the two public safety division departments are responsible for that progress. And I appreciate that. But I did want to talk another subject. Repeating what I brought to your attention a month ago, I'm gonna say this month of April, my prepared remarks want me to observe for you that this is an anniversary month. Because on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, it will be forty years since one of the building blocks of the Forest Park brand was captured in a council resolution. It was number thirty, and that I talked about very briefly in my last month's presentation. Sorry if I'm not getting recorded. I want to remind you that last time I brought a handout that included a summary of something that council member Roger Engstrand, now deceased, consultant Chip Henderson, and the council endorsed Quality of Life Task Force took upon themselves. The Twenty First Century City phrase, which was created by Chip Henderson in private conversation with me in two thousand and sixteen, is what I invited you to think about as Forest Park's existing brand. As it happens, the next meeting of the Forest Park Historical Society, April twelfth, at four PM in the senior center, will have Chip as our guest speaker. Chip has agreed to present his thoughts about what motivated the group and what it accomplished in pursuit of its vision, which was published in the April twentieth, nineteen ninety-one issue of the New Times newspaper as follows. "We, the citizens of Forest Park, are uniquely vital community of people who have chosen to base our way of life on shared values of a multicultural citizenry. Our high quality of life is maintained through meeting demands in the areas of culture, communication, education, vocation, recreation, housing, and city services that promote and celebrate freedom of diversity." Now, all council members are invited to attend that meeting. And as are many members of the task forces, we are able to contact and invite personally as a reunion. City manager Ray Hodges, ex-official member of that group, published January, in January eighth, nineteen ninety-two, a member list with twenty-four names on it, along with a list of twelve neighborhoods of origin that represent where they came from. For three of the twenty-four listed names, the spouses also participated, and as the work proceeded over time, other volunteers joined. Total participation ultimately amounted to forty-one residents. Then, on May eighteen, nineteen ninety-two, is a ten years later, resolution number forty-six, nineteen ninety-two was passed unanimously. Copies have been given to Sally Boyd, and I think she's now distributed them to you of that resolution. Its purpose was to reaffirm the resolution number thirty, nineteen eighty-two, the one forty years ago, also passed unanimously. The nineteen ninety-two resolution, the one of which you have a copy, says in part, "The city of Forest Park was the first community in Hamilton County to recognize and acknowledge the need for approving open housing legislation through the adoption of the Forest Park Fair Housing Ordinance on November nineteen seventy-three, November five, nineteen seventy-three." The results of community surveys conducted by the Quality of Life Task Force in the years nineteen ninety-two to ninety-five will be part of the next meeting's presentation, that is the one by Chip. Augmented Chip's recollections. Again, you're all invited. I hope you can join us. It's only an hour for presentation and a half hour business meeting, if you wish to stay, that means adjournment by five-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weirs.
Good evening, good night, whatever time it is. My name is Angela Murphy. Do I need to say my address, you say? Do I need to say my address here, on here?
You can just write it down.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm a little nervous, but I'm here tonight, I guess sort of a question, but just to piggyback real quick. I know Mr. Weirs, Weirs from Procter and Gamble, and I guess if you get a chance to hear Mr. Chip Henderson on his talk, I heard Mr. Henderson many years giving many talks at Procter and Gamble. And so just to say, if he's gonna talk about quality of life and purpose and just some things like that, that would be awesome. Because I'm here just to say that I'm really just kind of discouraged about like purpose, values, and quality of life here in Forest Park. I don't know, hopefully you all can maybe answer some questions, but I'm really discouraged about what's happening here in Forest Park. I mean, we're losing, to me, quality of life things. Stores, things, Walmart, Walgreens, Aldi's. We got a vape smoke store across the street from a school, who does that? I'm just, my mind is blown. I'm just so happy my children are grown, because if my children were not grown, I would not move to Forest Park. I have people asking me, young folks that are moving here, getting a job at Forest Park, I mean, getting a job at P and G, GE, my friend retired from Ford. They're asking, oh, where did you move, Angela, where did you raise your children at? I can't really hardly say Forest Park. There's nothing here for a growing family. There's not hardly anything here for a retiree. There's nothing here. I have to go to Corrine, Fairfield, other, Tri-County, Springdale, give my dollars to those communities. There's nothing here, everything's leaving, and there's nothing coming back. What are we doing here? What, I mean, can anybody tell me? We're losing, we have lost everything over the years. I've been here twenty-one years, my friend has been here longer. There's nothing, everything's leaving, nothing's coming back. Aldi's, there's a lot of older people that used to walk to Aldi's. You're forcing everybody to shop at Kroger. I mean, I'm not saying anything's wrong with Kroger, give people an option. We used to be able to get medication from either Walgreens or Walmart. Now, it's only Kroger. I mean, can anybody just say what's going on? And the taxes are still going up. And then there's three, four, five hundred thousand dollar houses going up. That's fine, but what else is here? There's nothing here. Oh, go to Corrine, go to Fairfield, go to Springdale. I'm just, I'm baffled. So please listen to Chip Henderson, maybe somebody here can learn something about values, principles, goals. You know, something about quality of life, because it's really not here in Forest Park. Yay for police officers and paramedics, we got diversity. But what's diversity without quality of life? For your families, for our families. We're just growing old, shopping at Kroger, that's all we have. Thank God for the Brothers Shop, I'm thankful. But, 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 but what, I mean, really? What are we doing here in Forest Park? What really are we doing? Because there's nothing, we have property, there's vacant properties, but what are we doing with them? Just letting grass and dirt grow? The kids can't play in grass and dirt all the time?
I just wanted, Ms. Murphy, um.
I might move.
I think. Ms. Murphy, I think everyone on this panel, everyone sitting here from council, I think we all share your sentiment. And this is a discussion that we've been having in an effort to improve the quality of life within Forest Park. As a resident, I truly share your sentiments, that's what made me run for council. As a city councilwoman, we, that's what I can say. So just know that that did not fall on deaf ears, and there is truly a sincere effort to create a better quality of life for the residents, the families, the women, the children, everyone here, so that we can have a quality place to live, because I honestly, we all agree.
Well, just to back up what Ms. Angie said, my name is Sharon Harris, and I live here in Forest Park as well. We just built a big, beautiful, I'm just piggybacking off what she said. Now, we have a high school, we just built, big, beautiful high school we just built. The kids are gonna be getting out of school soon. What jobs will they have? What, what, what kind of employment can they look forward to for summer jobs? They took, and then going back a minute, over here on, what is that, Northland? They took the McDonald's away? Do you know how many kids live in those apartment buildings back there? Those kids could ride their bike up there and get a sandwich when their parents have to work more hours? What are they doing? You taking our opportunity away from our kids to keep them off the street? What, what do we have? So they took that McDonald's, I was shocked, and you put another dollar store? We got a dollar store on every corner? Why would you take the McDonald's? And then across, like adjacent from that, where that McDonald's was, I'm sure you guys know where I'm speaking of, there's a Mexican restaurant sits on the corner, I never seen nothing over there. It's just there. Oh, it's open. But those poor kids that, back in that, you know, like they took the school away, I can't remember. Cameron Park took a school away, a beautiful school. My kids went to that school, it was a good school. All of a sudden, it's All of a sudden, it's gone. Why did it go? Why? What happened different? They just shut it down and wiped it away. So, if we don't start paying more attention to our youth, and again, yes, I'm a senior citizen as well, there's nothing for us here. What was that, Jazz in the Park? I used to have a nice little club I could go to every now and then. Now, I have nothing. I mean, that's every now and then. We got a few around here, but back to that, I'm, I'm on my, on the other side of that hill now, so I'm not so concerned with that, as I am the education and productivity of the children coming about now. I am a substitute teacher too, as well, and I see what these kids need. They've taken everything, they've taken all community centers away, and then we wanna know why we turn the news every day, and somebody shot. Every day, I turn the news on, somebody got shot again. And we're not helping. We're a dying community with everything leaving. Everything's leaving, nothing's coming back. So, is there an answer to Ms. Murphy's, uh, question? Okay, so, we're losing the Walmart, so, what's going in Walmart? Does anybody know that? Excuse me, do you?
No, I don't know, but I was gonna, I don't wanna sound weird or nothing, but maybe we need to start coming together to see what we can do to help the community, like, what programs are we needing, so we can just work on development.
Well, ma'am, she's, well, I appreciate that. She's not on council, so, um...
But what I'm saying, I mean, do we know the answers? I mean, that is Forest Park still, right?
Yes, ma'am, so...
No, as far, I, excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine.
But I talked to some of the employees there. They are very discouraged. That was a young person's feel needed, start getting ready for their futures. Those young people are very discouraged down there. They're losing their little, their little extra money. So, now, where do they go? What do they do now? Yeah, well, I mean, it's thriving, and then, the corporation, I think, from what, and this is hearsay as well, uh, one of the young lady told me, they said they weren't, uh, making no money. How, how are they not making money when the law is running over? How you not making money? Any hour of the day, I go to Walmart, there's somebody in there. Look at the Kmart we had years and years ago. Some of you guys may be a little too young to remember that, but...
I do.
Nah, alright. Yeah, nothing ever went there, so, instead of building a whole new building, you could've put the Walmart in there. Excuse me? That's true. And so, now, again, like she said, and that's really serious, our taxes go up because we're losing our revenues, and then we go, we gotta go to Fairfield? I gotta go to Colrain to go to Walmart? Took the Aldi's and put in Tri-County? Some of those people don't have transportation. I see people walking up and down these streets all the time. Wal, Aldi's was, plenty of people in Aldi's. Why we loo, does anybody have the answers? Why are they leaving? Why are we losing, why are we losing them?
Well, ma'am, I can, I can tell you, matter of fact, let me just take my mask off. The exact concerns that you're raising are why each and every one of us ran for council. A lot of the issues fall on our shoulders to solve, and best believe, I can, I can guarantee, we are working on everything that you are saying. It is a perception amongst these national corporations that come into our community and give us the bare minimum, and then they leave. I'm not trying to point the finger or point blame, a lot of these organizations are private, but we are working really around the clock to not only change the perception on why these organizations are leaving us, right, but if they come here, they need to give us not just the bare minimum, but what every other community gets. This is what I feel passionate about every day. The quality of life piece is so important, in fact, former Mayor Johnson, who actually recently retired, he wanted to start a committee that addresses these specific issues, and it's actually called the Quality of Life Committee. It is very appropriately named, and it is going to consist of not only council members, but as we expand, because it's a brand-new committee, as we expand, it's going to consist also of residents who, hopefully, like yourself, you know, uh, will voice these same concerns so we can work on them. If you haven't already, and I understand that everybody is busy, but if you haven't already, I would encourage you to join, or to apply to join, um, several committees, right? So, we have committees like Economic Development, we have Parks and Recreation, we have a Beautification Committee, there is a Planning Commission. All of these not only consist of city staff, a council member, but then also residents just like you, and these are the issues that we discuss day in and day out. The city of Forest Park itself does not control every piece of land. We collect taxes, we try to set the condition for people to come, but we don't necessarily control the, the perception, and that's what we're working on right now. We are, we don't understand, uh, why, uh, why companies like Aldi want to, you know, leave us for Springdale, because we have incomes that are commensurate, you know, they have space over there, um, they were a staple in the community, but I know I, I may look young, but I lived in the F-section, so I saw, you know, Lobos turn to Marsh and disappear. I saw the Red Lobster become McDonald's, and then McDonald's disappear. I saw the Swim Club dry up and disappear. I saw Cameron Park be raised from the ground. I'm not making excuses, but I, I'm telling you, we see the same thing. And I, and although it is frustrating, some of these entities we don't control, but it is incumbent upon us to come up with the solutions to make sure other people can come in, so people can have that quality of life aspect. Now, I'm not at liberty to discuss every single business transaction that we are working on currently, but that quality of life piece is paramount to what we're working on. In fact, um, as myself, Dr. Moore, uh, Councilmember Clark, we have worked with, um, a county-wide initiative, which became Metro Moves, to not only improve bus service for residents out here, but also to get infrastructure spun, uh, 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 financing. And that money is going to be, uh, improve our roads, you know, paving over roads, filling potholes, but we are also looking into using a portion of that infrastructure money about expanding bike lanes, so people can keep their families here, so they can raise their kids, and their kids can get to and from school very safely. That's just one piece that I'm, I can say. But in addition to that, um, if we, if we feel this strongly about it, it's not only just on council, I'm not, I'm not trying to attack you, but it's not just on council, it is incumbent upon residents themselves to form coalitions, right, to form organizations, to join committees, to continue to voice these concerns, so we can begin to address them, because I'm, every day, this is what I think about, every day. I'm thirty-one, and just in that short amount of time, I've seen drastic change that I am not content with, and that is why I'm here today, and I'm here to serve you. So, everything you saying, I'm writing it down, and I'm trying to think about how we gonna, you know, resolve it, but we are working together, and I promise you, I know, as politicians, we're not supposed to say that, but I promise you, we are working on this, every day.
I really hope so. And one last thing, and then I'm gonna let it go. We can close that vape shop. Now, I think, we need to work on something, we need to, we can start with, that's number one, it needs to be shut down and out of here. We don't need a vape shop.
And we truly were concerned...
I can't stop smoking now, and the kids don't need to know nothing about it.
We were absolutely concerned with that, and when, before it even opened, we, that was brought before council, I believe Dr. Moore specifically had brought something up, but, um, we were very much concerned, and we looked at how that couldn't, how we could, uh, help it find another home, and we were not able to do so in a legal capacity. And so, we don't like that any more than you do, but the community does have the power to let them know, to let them know how...
Sir, this is still our communication with the public, so, you know, please, I, I'm sorry, everything's been running long, I don't wanna cut you short, but just please, five minutes, because I'm, I, I can go on a rant, and I, you know...
You're getting ready to hear. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Brown. My name is Terry Smith. I live at fourteen fifty-five Otter Creek Drive in Forest Park, which you know. I've been a resident here since nineteen eighty-five. Before I continue, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Adams Holt, and there's one more, Holt, Adams, and Councilwoman Clark. Whenever we had conversation, you gave me your ear, and it was sincere, and you listened to me. And I remember one councilwoman said, "Well, Terry, get involved. Quit complaining, get involved," and that's my goal. But before I continue, let me set the history a little bit straight here. Talk about, first of all, I commend you as City Council. A lot of politicians and councilpersons, they talk to talk about inclusion. Y'all have walked the walk. I almost, I felt like the tears when I saw these firemen and police officers being sworn in. My background's law enforcement, forty years in law enforcement, I graduated FBI Academy, I'm educated, and I worked in Cincinnati Police Department, all facets, and I sometimes, on third shift, I saw no other officer that looked like me. It was, it was scary. Share a little story with you real quick. I was one of the first African-Americans, or Negro or color at the time, to take the test for Forest Park Police Department, and I scored number one, and this was back in the seventies. I'm working third shift in Lincoln Heights, I get a call to meet a Forest Park Police Officer, who then, is, later on, became Police Chief in Forest Park. He said, "Terry, they're not gonna hire you," and I asked him, I said, "Why not? What'd I do?" He said, "The comment was made, you know, if we hired a N, and they use the word, he could be y'all's chief someday." And that's always resonating, stuck with me. Let me tell you something else. Thirty-some years, my twin girls are thirty-one, Chief Mike Washington was a fire cadet at the time, and it was Elfy Jones, myself, and another fire officer, uh, fireman, we integrated Forest Park Fire Department. We were the first African-Americans to integrate the good old boy network, the volunteer fire department, and we were met with open arms, no problems at all. Walter Cook was one, once too, and he is now a bomb tech with Cincinnati Fire Department. I'm here tonight, and like I said, it was mixed emotions, and, um, I had to get that out about what happened years ago, but more importantly, I want, I'd like to commend you, and I commend the fire chief and the police chief. The police department, I lost my close friend who was murdered two years ago, a week before Christmas, by his daughter. He was in my wedding, we fished together, we swapped lives again on third shift, we bashed our wives, we was gonna save the world, and I lost him. Forest Park stepped up and did one hellacious job in the case. The fire department, one day I'm at work, my daughter calls me, she said, "Dad, Mom can't breathe." What? She's on the floor. Have you, I've called nine-one-one. Medics responded, they took her, took her to the hospital. They called me from the medic unit and said, "We're taking her, we got her back breathing okay, we're transporting her to UC Westchester." I said, "Please don't take her to Mercy Fairfield." They did. I commend both of them, I commend Chief Jones. But I'm here, just a couple of things, we talk about quality of life, we have no quality of life. We have nothing to offer. Why should I have to move out Forest, talk about moving out of Forest Park, and move into Wyoming, someplace I can't afford, high taxes, get my kids in a, in a, a good school district? At the time, Forest Park School District on a one to six-hundred, I think it was five-ninety-six, horrible, flunking. So, what do we have to do? I ended up sending my girls, Bethany and Glendale, from there, Cincinnati country day. Could I afford it? No, thank God, bless my mother's, God bless my mother, she helped me get those kids through college. It was a struggle. You go in the Kroger store, nowhere else in Cincinnati, they let a Kroger store look like it does over in Forest Park. I should not have to go down to Fairfield or Oakley to shop. You know, and Forest Park cannot no longer be the laughingstock of Hamilton County. My twin girls are in a position to build a house, and Dad, not out here. I said, "Why not? Want a house on Way Cross?" "No, Dad." I also would like to say, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to com, uh, commend, um, gentlemen that works for you, when right is it? I was, a couple weeks ago, I was outraged about an incident, and I was wrong, and I misinterpreted, I didn't, what I saw wasn't what I saw, and it had something to do with the way, uh, the recycle bins. I called him, he came right up to my house, took care of it, I apologized, I was wrong, he was right. Great job, great customer service. Now, right now, I live, as I said, fourteen fifty-five Otter Creek Drive. We have three cars, my daughter, my wife, and mine. When my other twins home, her car is there. We have paid, paid, not my daughters, not my wife, me, close to two thousand dollars repairing tires, and you know what, where it's coming from? The construction on Way Cross, those houses. And I venture to say, if these houses were being built in Wyoming, Liberty Township, Fairfield, Amely Village, Sharonville, Glendale, a project manager would be out there every day making sure those nails were picked up. And when I first got one flat tire, okay, yeah, my daughter got one, and her car was supposed to be puncture-proof, and when the gentleman at the dealership pulled out, he said, "This is a construction now." He said, and he said, "Mr. Smith, are they doing work in your neighborhood?" I said, "Yeah," and he said, "That's your problem." Like I said, we've closed to two thousand dollars. My, I have a neighbor who couldn't be here tonight because he's babysitting his grandkids, he's had three flat tires. My next-door neighbor's had two. I'm asking for your help. As I said, and I'm gonna reiterate it, if they were building anywhere else, they would not be bootlegged, slide town, slicked, doing this work, only in Forest Park. And we gotta quit being the laughingstock of Hamilton County. And like I said, I applaud you, I applaud you all for the inclusion, what I saw tonight, it's been long coming. And the fire chief from Cincinnati came and tapped me on the shoulder, he said, "Can you believe this?" He said, "What's, it was real worth it." But I'm a senior citizen, and I'm still working, because my wife likes to spend, I have no choice. But nevertheless, I want to stay here in Forest Park, but right now, my goal, and I told her, I said, "This mansion, my little house is downsized, I wanna get, with my tax dollars, I see 'em at work, not just the police and fire." The only complaint I've ever had, and it's, it's understandable, it's a working complaint, that's when they don't clear off the snow, and, you know, snow is snow, everybody can't do it at the same time, and, and make sure that Terry Smith has a way to go to work. I'm just one person that lives in Forest Park, so I accept it. But I, I challenge this council. First of all, you're new, you're young, and you're educated. The previous council at the time had came and gone, goodbye. If they had have done their job, we wouldn't be having these conversations now. And I, I'm just telling you how I feel. And, you know, I've, I've been impressed with you, Mr. Mayor, with the councilwoman I had conversation, you, sir, came over and introduced yourself, introduced yourself to me, and Mr. City Manager, I want to thank you all, but you just don't know how it made me feel, um, when I saw those guys up here tonight, because I heard that conversation, "Well, if they hire him, he could end up being our chief." And by the way, I ended up being the police chief for Lincoln Heights, got hired, got a, yeah, I got, got my college education there, went on FBI Academy, SBI, Southern Police Institute, and, you know, well-qualified to have been a Forest Park Police Officer. And my wife told me something, she said, "Terry, five minutes, not your ten minutes." So, thank you for putting up with me, uh, and this lady, she said, she said it all, things I wanna say, she said it all. You know, and y'all got to do something, because, let's face it, my time is coming and gone, I have less time in front of me than I have behind me. And I, young people are our future, and we starting to see, what, shootings in Forest Park? It's crazy, and it, you get, you see people on TV, "Oh, we can't, we didn't know it could happen in our community." Wake up and smell the coffee, it's the real world. No community is immune now. We live in a very violent world, okay? Thank you, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Former Mayor Coats.
I know my peonmanship is not as good as it once was. Well, my name is Wayne Coats, I live at one-one-two-eight-four Lockport Court. Uh, some may know me, some may not. You may have seen my name on the building, or you may have seen a picture on the wall. I was much younger then. I left council as mayor back in nineteen ninety-nine, and, um... And, uh, it's, uh, kind of bittersweet sitting here, because I'm seeing all so many new faces, except one over there, who was my law director back, way back when.
Just can't get rid of me.
You know, good thing when you see it. Although I hear he's now doing the prosecutor's work. One thing I would like to challenge, City Council, having been on council for ten years and four years as the mayor, if you haven't already, pull up a copy of the charter, and read the charter. You know, the preamble is one thing, Article One is to name the boundary, Number Two is the municipal powers. But before anybody else, Number Three is City Council. And everybody, and everything else drifts down from there. You have the power. It only takes four votes. That's the majority, when you got seven. And the reason I bring that up is that, uh, and John may recall this, it's been years back, but, uh, I got into a run-in with the Planning Commission. Uh, they did not want to put a development somewhere, way back over in the other area there, was nothing but a litter drop, uh, just a bunch of trash. And I thought it was time for it to be developed. Now, of course, I will say that I didn't have anything to do with it, because I am a real estate broker, but I did not involve myself as a brokerage. But I will say that council has the power to override the Planning Commission and the zoning. That's why I want you to read the charter. The, uh, if I can just digress off that amendment, I was thinking about your situation, because I brought that to my wife's attention, uh, the lady behind, Brandon here. Uh, I'm no lawyer, but you may want to discuss some issues with the school district, because I believe predo-unculation is a problem. And I, I think that that could be a, a area that they may want to be discussed with.
Member, please address council in about a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is, uh, I think the, uh, website needs to be updated, we got the twenty-twenty-one council meeting and agenda and work session. Also, on the Planning Commission meeting packets, uh, you only got four packets there from twenty-twenty. I got, uh, knowledge of, uh, because of the zoning change of Swim Club, I saw the signs, but I didn't see anything else about that. I contacted, uh, Chris Anderson's office, apparently he was out, but Kara Vitri she sent me the, uh, plans. Given that the city school district, or Munson Woods, needs cash, and they got another levy on, you may want to reconsider any tax abatements on residential properties that encourage more population to our school districts. Uh, somebody has to pay for it, and I can tell you that, uh, assessment values are going up. And, uh, I know, and since the last levy passed, my real estate taxes have went up twenty-four percent. I'm sure yours has too. So, um, I will say that I did ask Kara to ask Chris to give me a call. Because in the twenty-twenty minutes, I noticed that, uh, the city was selling the residential properties. Uh, Linda and I were looking to relocate a ranch, I think the mayor and I have talked about this. And I was wondering about available properties. I'm a former home builder, I built an eighty-one home around my home down in Louisville. I moved up here in eighty-four. Uh, but I did ask Chris to call me, and I've left, uh, that time and two other messages for Chris to call me, and I still have never heard from Chris. And, uh, City Manager Jones, uh, my wife encouraged me to ask this of you. She sent you a letter two years ago in regards to Cat, Scat, on our property, she never heard back from you. I can say with COVID and everything, I, I would give you a pass on that, but I don't think Linda will, so. That's okay, as I say, it, it happens. But, uh, speaking of properties, um, and I'll try to finish here, because, uh, I know we've went past tip-off here. But, uh, one of our properties down the street from me, thirteen thirty-seven Longacre, has been vacant now for fifteen years. There's been many code enforcement issues on that property. You've, they've made minor changes, like if the doors are rotted, they just put plywood over the front panel, that's not fixing the problem. But when they don't have gas onto the property, it's been vacant. And I would think the, the volatility of that property, I wouldn't want to go in it. But I do know that, uh, one of the things that we had tonight was, uh, a lot of code enforcement issues, and I will mention this, that, uh, two weeks ago, when Linda and I were walking, Wenton Lake, as we were leaving, I saw our code enforcement officer parked over in one of the little rest areas there, uh, doing his thing. I thought he should be working, but, uh, I know when I see him go down my street, I don't see him stop. And I can tell you, I, I know three violations that I see every damn day, pardon my French. And having sit on mayor's court for six years, and have found violations and found people for doing these things, it, it behooves me why we don't have better code enforcement. Now, I know we just went through COVID, we have alternatives, we have grants that we can help people with, we have loan programs that we can help people with. But if we don't enforce our codes, that just came out again with our tax, you know, it, it just behooves me how, how that can go on. And if you start, it's like litter, if you seize a little bit, next thing you know, somebody says, here's this, here's that. And I will just summarize it by people's attitude, talking about rental property. I went down and talked to a neighbor who was in a code violation. He told me it was last year, it was twenty-twenty-one, he could do any damn thing he wanted. Okay, there's a rental mentality for you. So, I would only encourage our city to do more to preserve our city. And I know that you all have a challenge ahead of you. I know when I got on council, it was a challenge for me. But I had two very good mentors, Ed Schaefer and Roger Ingstrom, and they mentored me. And all I will say is that, uh, I don't think you need my mentoring, but if you ever have a question, I'm always open. So with that, I'll take my leave and thank you for your time and for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Coats.
All right, for the sake of time, so we're gonna close communications from the public, um, at this time, uh, we thank you for coming. Know that we hear every, every single concern, and we are actively working on, um, just these concerns, nothing else. This is, this is our priority, our top priority. Just for the, the sake of time, if you do not, uh, wish to stay, we're gonna go get into new business, but at this time, if anyone needs to like, you know, sneak out, you are more than welcome to stay. All right. You're more than welcome to stay, but, um, and like I said, these, uh, are recorded, and they will be available online. All right, moving on to item number five, reports from council members. We're going to start with, uh, Councilmember Clark.
Um, so, we're invited, can you guys hear me? We're invited, uh, you aren't, you all are invited, excuse me, to celebrate Arbor Day. Um, it is April twenty-sixth on a Tuesday, it is at nine-one-one Memorial Central Park next to the shelter. Um, there will be a breakfast following, and so you can contact Rachel Wilson for that. You can, um, do so by contacting, um, her by phone at five-one-three-five-nine-five-five-two-six-four. Uh, Arbor Day is a cer, is certainly very, very special to Forest Park, uh, for obvious reasons. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Councilmember, do you have, uh, I have no work session items, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
Um, yes, I do, um, the minority business, uh, minority business, please.
All right, moving on, we're gonna go to Councilmember Adams.
Um, yes, sir, I do have a couple of things I'd like to mention. Um, I'd like to, uh, please remind our residents to encourage our community, city visitors, um, about picking up trash and not littering and things like that within the city. It seems to be, um, more frequent, that when I'm driving around or just walking, that there are more McDonald's or pop cans or beer cans and things like that on the ground, so, um, I, I would hate to think that our residents are the ones littering. So, um, I'm just asking if they could remind our community vis, our city visitors and friends and family that come here, um, not to do that, because this is where we live. Um, also too, I'd like to reiterate your point about perception. I thought you did a very good job, sir, uh, explaining that, and for our residents, I really would like, um, them to really understand and hone in on the gist of what you were saying regarding perception in our residents. So, thank you, sir.
All right, and I don't have any work session items for you, but I do hear you saying, um, that would be something in code enforcement, so would you like me to add that to the work session?
Yes, sir, I think in light of tonight's conversation, um, with our residents, that we do, we should look at code and spend some time having some discussion and making provision to enforce.
Okay, code enforcement review, thank you, uh, Councilmember Adams. Moving on to our next report for Councilmember Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, we do have one more candidate to interview for, uh, one of our boards. I'll be working with Ms. Boyd to schedule that, um, interview. Um, that should be forthcoming within the next few days, and other than that, I have nothing else.
All right, thank you. Do you have any add, items to add to the work session?
Uh, no, at this time, sir.
Moving on to first Vice Mayor Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, and I do not have anything to add on the work session.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, moving on to second Vice Mayor Moore, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a few minutes to, um, acknowledge our women veterans. Um, this past week, um, Councilman Harrison invited me as an elected official to a military Sisters in Arms, um, at the University of Cincinnati honoring five amazing women who are vets, who are in the military. They volunteer in their communities and they're attending school. And I just think that as residents and as council, we need to recognize more of our veterans in our community.
Absolutely.
And so hopefully, um, on our next work session, if we can start thinking about how we can honor, um, our veterans, especially women, um, and also families. We forget about the families who members are deployed, um, who hold down the fort when their service member is away. And so, just looking at how we can in the future, um, recognize our, um, veterans and our military, um, residents. So, thank you, Mr. Harrison, uh, for inviting me as elected official, and there were other elected official, um, as well. And so I just wanted to, to acknowledge the great job, um, with honoring women.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Um, so would you like for me to add, um, the veteran recognition as a work session item? All right. Um, thank you, moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
All right, thank you, and do you, I have one, uh, work session item for you, it's, uh, about annual no issuance, do you have any other items to add to the work session? All right, thank you. Uh, and that concludes, uh, item number five on the agenda, reports from council members. Moving on to item number six, the mayor's report, that is mine, and I do not have any report to add at this time. But I will add a few items to the work session agenda. Um, we were hearing a lot about vacant homes and a lot about, um, code enforcement issues, so I'm, I'm going to add something about, um, to the work session, if we can look into our, uh, review our zoning code, and then also any ordinances to, um, to do something about institutional investors who are not taking care of properties. So that would be, that would still be under code enforcement, but I'm just gonna add that on there. And that concludes my reports. Moving on to the City Manager's report.
Yeah, I'll try and keep it quick, but, uh, getting into code enforcement, a little bit of information, we are changing some of our work hours, so that we'll have at least two people over the weekends. Which is when many of the code enforcement issues are occurring, uh, so we're rescheduling those folks so that they'll be working on the weekend. The, um, we actively pursue, um, any, any kind of violation, and we cite them, and we'll take them to court and, um, enforce whatever we can based on the law. But I just want to let citizens know that if, um, you know, we've heard a lot about, but we didn't hear a lot of numbers and, or addresses, uh, if you've got an issue, uh, don't talk to your neighbor about it, give us a call so we can go down and take care of it. Also coming up this weekend is the Breakfast with the Easter Bunny, they'll be at Fresh's, I want to thank Fresh's, a long time, um, business here in Forest Park, and they are hosting the Easter Bunny, I believe, at, uh, this weekend, so check our website. I think it's ten to twelve, but, um, I want to make sure I don't have the exact time in front of me, but it's a Saturday, and I look forward to, um, anybody that has any kids or, um, grandkids, uh, I'm gonna sit and talk to the Easter Bunny, um, stop, and it'll be a lot of fun.
Which, which Fresh's?
It's the one, I'm sorry, it's the one on Witten at Chase Plaza up here. And the chipper program's beginning today, so if you have, um, some chipper needs, uh, again, check our website, look for the, look for the schedule that's out there. Make sure you put it out your right day, follow the rules, don't put too much, um, that would, that can't be taken in, in the, a lot of amount of time. And, um, you know, we keep rotating through our, uh, through the whole city, get it as quick as we can. So in order to be efficient and effective, we need to, uh, you know, get in there and get, get it very quickly, so, put it on the street the way it needs to be put, and, uh, follow instructions, and, uh, everybody will, uh, get their chipping done as, as quick as we can. Other than that, if there's any other questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Anybody have any questions for the City Manager? Hearing none, moving on to item number eight, uh, other reports, uh, starting with our Law Director, Mr. John Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that everybody does understand, we, uh, as long as a code violation comes into court, uh, we do have, we call it the property docket. It's the first docket that goes every Thursday, and we, uh, there's sometimes a fine line, we have to deal with people who are unfortunately unable to repair property, whether it be paint issues or gutter issues, as far as gutters falling down. Um, so we try to work with those people, we direct them to programs, uh, including the city's program, that might give financial assistance. But we do prosecute those who refuse to clean up their property, whatever it might be, and they're subject to fines and court costs when that occurs. Um, so, we do have the ability to prosecute people. There is a jurisdictional issue when we have an out-of-state corporation. Unfortunately, our, many, many decades ago, our Supreme Court said we don't have jurisdiction, so we probably have to look at something on an alternative basis for out-of-state corporate owners of properties. I've made a note, uh, I'm gonna do some research, uh, to see what we can do, if, as an example, rental property has a bunch of junk in it, can we declare it a nuisance? And go to Hamilton County Common Police Court with a civil complaint, uh, demanding that it be cleaned up, and if they don't clean it up, we clean it up and assess the property tax bill, that type of thing. But I'm gonna research that and see if, what we can do, uh, being that there is an issue with our, our corporate people here in town, not doing what they should be doing. Three opinions, uh, just briefly, uh, I addressed for our HR department some civil service rule about how long our civil service eligibility list exists. Looked at an issue for Mr. Jones about, um, expired documents, that is, documents that are no longer necessary for the city's purposes, and under the restrictions we have can be destroyed or perhaps donated to an organization. or perhaps donated to an organization such as the Historical Society. And then, as you all know, I, I talked with, was it Captain Ward, James Ward, about the new carry concealed weapons law in Ohio where you don't have to have, you know, the registration. And the county prosecutor already is saying, we're not prosecuting any more people, although the law doesn't go into effect till June, they're going to dismiss all cases. So it's just one, one more log on the fire, so to speak. But that would be the end of my report unless there are any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for our law director? All right, hearing none, thank you for that, John. Moving on to our next report, our clerk of council, Ms. Sally Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers zero-three dash twenty-twenty-two and zero-four dash twenty-twenty-two and resolution numbers zero-seven dash twenty-twenty-two and zero-eight dash twenty-twenty-two were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, new business. I'm going to need a motion to suspend. First vice mayor Holt.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinance numbers zero-five dash twenty-twenty-two and ordinance number zero-six dash twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Only that these ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. And will the clerk call the motion on, on the, clerk call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark. Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore. Sylvester.
Yes. All right, motion passes seven-zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number zero-five dash twenty-twenty by title only?
Ordinance number zero-five dash twenty-twenty-two, amending annual appropriation ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one.
All right, is there a motion on that, Mr., Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number zero-five dash twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Well, this, this ordinance is the First Amendment of the twenty-twenty-two appropriations budget. It comprised of, of changes being presented for various sublines of the budget and the financial impact that can be associated with the general funds administration, the fund information services, fire services, TIF fund, and the development fund. East Council has details noted with the appropriation in this amendment. And based on the information provided, I move to adopt ordinance zero-five twenty-two.
Thank you for that, council member. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
No.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Motion passes six to one. Next is ordinance number zero-six dash twenty-twenty-two, and this will be a first reading, correct?
Yes.
So there is no vote on this. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number zero-six dash twenty-twenty-two, enacting revisions to section zero-nine, building permit, inspection and plan review fees, with minor coordinating revisions to the fire department fees, section five of chapter one fifty-six, comprehensive fee schedule of the classified ordinances of the city of Forest Park to update building department and fire department fees.
I had a question because it was, we just did a motion to read these both by title only. And I was just wondering why there's a confusion. Why is it read in full if there was a motion to read by title only?
I just read the title for ordinance zero-six.
I said, just, this is the first reading, there's, there's no vote.
Okay, my mistake because I thought he said read in full.
Oh, no.
It's, it's been a long day, I'm tired.
Thank you for that. Actually, that would conclude ordinance number zero-six dash twenty-twenty since first reading, there is no vote on that. Moving on to resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two. Will clerk please read that by title only?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I think we have to do a motion for that one because it wasn't in the last motion.
Oh, okay, okay, so.
So it's just a motion to suspend the rules to read it by title only, resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, I need another motion to suspend.
My motion to suspend the rules regarding the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, or resolution number zero-dash twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded. Will, let the clerk call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
It's on a roll.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Motion to suspend the rules passes seven-zero. Now, will the clerk please read resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two by title only?
Resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two, delegating authority to make declarations of official intent and allocations with respect to reimbursements of temporary advances during fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, made for capital improvements and acquisitions for municipal purposes to be made from subsequent borrowings.
All right, resolution's been read by title only. Is there a motion? Councilmember Sylvester.
I'm motioning that we adopt a resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
In reference to this resolution, there's a max of a reimbursement set aside of five million in aggregate, and this would authorize, be authorized by this resolution. The primary benefit of this legislation is to provide cash flow and relief of large capital expenditures involved with major street repairs and resurfacing programs made in twenty-twenty-two. Based on the, the notes and comments, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you for that, council member Sylvester. Will the clerk please call a roll on a motion?
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And that concludes all of our new business. Is there any business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? I'm sorry. Oh. That's Tuesday, right? Is it Monday, okay? Okay. We need to make a motion on that. So next week's meeting is going to be on, well, in two weeks, there's going to be another council meeting on a Monday. We have to decide if we are going to do it by Zoom or if we're going to come in person. But if we do it by Zoom, we have to make a motion now, is that correct? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, sure.
The reason, the reason for that is we use this room as a overflow for the tax office. On the eighteenth, that's the tax due date, and our tax office is open until six P M. that date, and they'll be servicing folks into the evening. And many years, this room would be full of people who need tax assistance. This is the only room we have big enough to hold everybody. We could have them wait outside, but it's best to have them inside. And so Monday, we, we either have to make other arrangements with our tax office or if we could have a Zoom meeting, then we could do a Zoom meeting, then we could, we could use this for, continue to use for the tax office. Or if you want to change the meeting date to Tuesday, that would help as well. If not, we can find and make other arrangements with the tax office if we need to.
I'd like to make a motion that we do the Zoom meeting on our next council meeting.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
None.
Uh, this can be a voice vote, correct? Or does it have to be a roll? Voice, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, mo- motion passes. All right, is there any business to come before the body? All right.
Mr. Mayor, was it a full ayes, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There was no opposition though, so seven, motion passes seven-zero. All right, any business to come before the body? Any business to come before the body? Hearing none, council meeting adjourned.